That was good.
Call to order the meeting of the City of Keystone Heights, Monday, August 1st at 6:00 PM. We will start with an invocation by Father Mason Wiggins of St. Williams Catholic Church, who will be followed by George Owens, American Legion, retired Navy, for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join me by standing.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of friendship. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our brothers and sisters, and continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, your greater glory, and the service of our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rakowski, would you like to call a roll, please?
Mayor Lake?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hurt?
Here.
Councilman Tony Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman Thompson? It throws me off when one's not here. Councilman Baden Brown will be here in just a few moments.
Okay, thank you. We do have a forum. So we're going to switch it up. We love seeing all these bodies in here, but we know you want to go home and do other things. I think I heard you just got out of practice, right? Is that true? So we'll get you home to dinner and a shower. Dinner and a shower. Can we have the Keystone Heights High School state champion weightlifting team in front, please? Council, would you like to come down?
There's so many cameras.
You're like she's free! You're late like always.
So, Keystone Heights High School state champion weightlifting team, congratulations. So you all know that we have a sign on State Road 100 and a sign on State Road 21. Anything that happens at the high school that is fantastic, we as a city try to acknowledge your accomplishments. And so last year you won a sign, and you win another sign this year. And so we like to present a sign. You don't get to keep it. Otherwise, we can't put it up. But we want to present you with the sign as a team. And we know it's a team effort. I'm going to present the sign, and then we're going to call up your coaches to see if there's anything they want to share with you and with us, okay? So without further ado, the newest sign for the 2022 Boy State Weightlifting Champions. Here it goes.
Everybody smile at once.
Okay, so Coach Lowry?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to come forward and say some words? I said some words, not a lot of words, just some.
Parents, friends, family, Keystone, this is awesome. I mean, there's a whole lot of communities around that don't do things like this when something special happens, but in a small community like this, to do this, that's crazy. I mean, it really is. These guys work hard. A lot of what we do is public child abuse. We start, you know, we really, we work out. These guys put in the effort year-round. We don't take breaks. We don't take time off. We start, we lift weights all through football season. That's why these kids are coming from football to football days. It's what we do. We lift weights through our football season. We take a break off. We take a week off for Thanksgiving. Then we come back when we start and get ready to go to April, okay? April comes, we take a week off after the state championship, and then we start for our summer. It's what we do. It's in these kids' blood. And it's the one sport that I firmly believe all athletics ends. I will never play athletics again. I don't play football, baseball. You can't play it, nor eventually. You can always do this. And I want these kids to catch it in their bones and do it all the way. Thank you all so much, and praise God.
So I will just say, first of all, growing up here in Keystone, and to be back, this is surreal. And I just love, the community support is amazing. It's, I would say, and so you can speak to that. It's why I am who I am today, and maybe you can speak to that. So these boys are going to have that experience because of the support of our community. And the good thing is, is that they're all amazing kids. I mean, they know that academics come first, and they make it happen in the classroom. And they're such good examples and role models. So winning state is just a bonus. They do all the work that it takes to get there to it, but they have the support of everybody involved in our community. That makes a difference, and it's going to continue to make a difference as we go forward. I am super proud of them. I like, I love every one of them because they are just all-around amazing kids. And on top of that, there's state champions because they've earned it. And I'll tell you, they put in the work. Coach Lowry was telling you about the work. It's not like they just showed up and they just have, you know, good records, really poor, and they carry on. They put in the work. And it's evident. I see it. I smell it tonight. Thankful for being here, and we thank you for the Keystone community for your support.
We're going to push this out of the way, and we're going to get some better...
You still want, you're probably not tall enough.
So I need you over here. Press someone I need you over here. Councilwoman Thompson, can you come over here, please? Uh, council, if you can just step in. Councilor Principal, I need you in too, and pretend like you like each other, please, in time. Principal Mark, I need you to scoot in, maybe right behind Coach Brown. Perfect. Vice Mayor Hurt, I need you to move in. You're the last one in there. All right, we got it. Smile big. State champions!
That was great. Was that fun?
I'm sorry you guys have to follow that.
All right. Lynn, do we want to shut that door as they continue to, just close it? We have a number of presentations tonight, and the next one I'm really excited about. We, as a council, discussed recognizing people in our community who impact us in their own way. And so we asked for nominations from our city council people. We received a number of nominations. And this, this person we're recognizing tonight was nominated by more than one councilperson, not surprisingly. And I'd like to bring him up, Mr. Johnny Mason. So I didn't write a poem, Ms. Bullock. You knew who I was talking about, though, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, okay. So when used as a noun, the definition of impact is the action of one object coming forcibly into contact with another. As a verb, impact means have a strong effect on someone or something. We're very fortunate to have many people of impact in our community. And I'm excited about spotlighting many over the next few months. Our first community member was nominated by more than one councilperson, and that's Johnny Mason. Johnny and his family own Johnny's Barbecue. Aside from the barbecue, when I think of his restaurant, I think about sweet tea. And it's funny, because I don't even drink sweet tea. But anyone and everyone in town loves Johnny's Sweet Tea. I can only imagine the thousands of gallons of sweet tea Johnny has donated to Little League, Pop Warner, softball, bands, soccer, and all of the organizations he's generously provided it to over the years. He's done so much more for our families, but for the purpose of identifying an impact, I think tea is the sweetest example. Johnny uses the things he knows about, food, hospitality, generosity, and yes, sweet tea, to positively impact our community by giving people this vehicle to raise money for their organizations, demonstrating that impact is truly a verb. And for that and so much more, Johnny, we thank you. So we're not doing a resolution tonight, but I do have the key to the city. And I'd like a motion and a second from council to adopt giving him this key. All right, all those in favor? Hey, imagine what it's like up here for me! Okay, so with no further ado, we want to honor you by giving you a key to the city. Let me get a picture. So Tony, Tony has some words. You're not, you're not done yet?
Yeah, you're not done yet. Don't walk out that door. Johnny Mason has been a rock to this community for many, many years. And was very thankful when you came and offered us a restaurant here in Keystone. And I do like the sweet tea, but I'm partial to the Arnold Palmer. And, but, one thing that, you know, some things Johnny has done, people don't even know about. And there's a lot of families in here have lost loved ones. And guess who shows up with food? It's Johnny. He did that for my family, and I appreciate that. Another thing is when we had all the fires, anytime we had a major fire for the volunteer fire department, Johnny Mason and his group of employees or family were there to feed us. And that's very appreciated. And if there's anybody I can be like, when I grow up, it'd be like Johnny Mason. Thank you, Johnny.
Okay, that's the fun part. Fun's over. We've got to get down to business now. All right, we're actually on presentation letter C. We'd like to ask Brad Millian to come up from our CPA Reddish and White. He's presenting the audit.
That sure is a tough act to follow.
I'm sorry.
I think if I got those weightlifters involved in some kind of activity, the first thing I'd do is get them in the ocean. That'd be my only chance. So we're talking about the audits that were done for the year ended September 2021. And you sure had a lot going on that year, if you recall. You finished the pavilion over there with the CARES Act fund. You had to do the remapping of the cemetery and also the construction of the mausoleum. We split off the CIP fund from the general fund. You had the Rails to Trails Trailhead project was finally completed, and the CRA fund. And this was the first year that the CRA fund had to have a separate audit document because it met that $100,000 threshold. So there was just all kinds of things going on this year. It was a good challenge, and I think we did pretty well. Since there were so many things going on, I met with the Budget and Finance Committee for over an hour and kind of really went through the details there. So, and unfortunately, it's on video if you want to see it. That'll give you a little more detail of what was transpiring. So I thought maybe it might be more appropriate just to summarize things here today. I usually talk about each of the funds. The general fund, we show a budget, the actual presentation on page 36. And you'll see that your revenues were over your budget, which is always good, and your expenditures were under your budget, so that's, that's a positive. The second presentation there was your CRA fund. You had more revenues than you budgeted, but your expenditures were actually over your budget. And so that's a compliance issue that we'll come back to. But we really want to try to avoid that situation. And then for the first time, we showed your CIP fund. And that's your discretionary sales surtax. We're showing that as a separate fund. That's a special revenue fund because it gets a specific source of revenue. So now we're showing that apart from the general fund, so that should make it a little easier to follow. Your cemetery fund, unfortunately, had an excellent year, I think, due to the COVID situation. And you had a really healthy operating profit and were strong financials there. Getting back to the CRA fund, they have a whole set of compliance issues that cropped up a couple of years ago, and that's why they want a separate audit and so forth. And all the findings that we put in our report really relate to your budget. And I can just kind of go down real briefly there. It's like, once you approve your budget, go ahead and send a copy to the Clay County within 10 days. Just improve transparency. Let them know what you're planning on doing. We want to improve the reporting format, and I can see from your June financials that I pulled off of your meetings from the previous meeting, that you, that the format looks much easier to read. If you go back to the September 2021 report, it was all jarbled and really difficult to discern. So it's important to have that presentation a little bit nicer, and you've done that already. And then you amended the budget last July, but then the amended numbers didn't show up in these financial reports for subsequent reporting periods. So it's important to make sure you have updated information that you're looking at. And then it looks like you probably should have amended the budget the second time at the end of the year because your actual expenditures were higher than your budgeted expenditures. Again, we've gone over this in excruciating detail at the Budget and Finance Committee, meaning we've made steps and so forth. And Lynn and Rebecca fully understand what to do to prevent this and so forth in the future. Also, we'd like to see in the Budget and Finance that you've actually reviewed quarterly reports, improved the documentation amendments. We looked at the report for the month ended, and we didn't find any issues, or we made these comments and so on and so forth. And then the last finding is, is one of those peculiarities where the state's really coming in. And you get money each year, and any unused money for one year needs to be rolled into the next year's budget for a specific project that wasn't completed in that year. So it's just kind of a little extra documentation. If you don't use the funds and the money builds up, technically, you're supposed to give the money back to Clay County, or there's some other purposes that don't apply to your situation. So to avoid giving the money back, we just go ahead and roll it into the next fund and label it as such as related to the prior year for a specific project, and then track that until that money is spent. The only other finding we had was in the city, was internal control related, was related to the accounts receivable. It really got jarbled this year. You're on a cash basis, and I come in at the end of the year and adjust it to accrual basis, but three of your customers have to get billed in order for them to pay. So technically, they're on accrual basis, and so... And then to add to that, you didn't have some adjustments that we had last year get posted. So it was Sudoku 101 trying to sort through that. And so the recommendation is to have Rebecca go in there and clean that out and make sure she has an accurate list. And that's kind of the message today, is to get the CPA more involved in your monthly reporting and helping you with the budgets and letting you know when you go over, and then also doing a little bit more work at the end of the year in getting ready for the audit. I know that we've had the same situation over at the airpark, and I understand we're meeting there this Friday to talk to her about what other things she can do at that level. But, you know, we do these cash-to-accrual conversions for the audit, and that's really just pure accounting work that should be done before we really start the work. And there's a few other items that we've put in the engagement letter we're going to try to encourage Rebecca to do. So it'll be a challenging year.
Thank you. Any questions for this morning? Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
And then, Madam Mayor, if I may, we have met, Ms. Circe, myself, and Rebecca has had one initial meeting over the engagement letter, the responsibilities that they would like for our CPA to accumulate over the year and then versus what they're, what they're doing, what our accountant, or I'm sorry, what our auditor is doing. And then we're having a second meeting, as he said, this Friday, just to meet of minds to see what can be handled by our CPA versus our auditor. And then you should be seeing a revised engagement letter within the next month for adoption next month.
Okay. Thank you. Item D is the Fort Water Star Irrigation Presentation by Deb Conkey, St. John's Water Management District. Mr. Conkey?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members. It's an honor to be here. And I want to thank the Save Our Lakes folks for being here. You've played such an integral role in making the Black Creek Resource, Water Resource Project come to life. And I think our chairman would echo that, and that happens here later this month. But now we enter the next phase of your homework assignment, and that is water conservation because that ties into everything that we do. And the high, the football team and all the weightlifters here, I'm sure we have a Naval Academy football player or two potentially in that group, so I would love to see it. Because I'm thankful. You have a wonderful school district. My two daughters graduated from the school district, so you produce some wonderful things here. And this is what makes these meetings so special, is what you just went through. Like you said, that's the fun stuff. Now we get serious. So it's an honor to continue our conversation on the importance of water conservation here tonight. The district is about to embark on a historic project, the Black Creek Water Resource Development Project. It is a journey that started in this room back in 2013. I remember, because I was here, sitting over there, Mr. Rick Bradley was sitting over there. Scott was here leading that conversation, so thank you so much. So over the years, with extensive community and elected official support, it has become reality. We break ground shortly. Seventeen miles later, water goes into a, what they call a, it's a filtration system in the Alligator Creek into Lake Brooklyn as a major recharge point. And the rest is history after that, as we just keep making that good work happen. Florida is experiencing an unprecedented growth, which means protecting our water supply is more important than ever. For you, the conversation is no more "growth is coming." It is "growth is here." Recharging the accafer plays a huge role, and you are ground zero as a critical recharge point. Water conservation and protecting our water supply is a multifaceted action plan. No one item is an end-all, be-all solution. Keystone does not have reclaimed water as an available resource currently. While our presenter, Ms. Deidre Irwin, a preeminent expert on water conservation in Florida, will walk you through key strategies, thus allowing you, as leaders in Keystone Heights, to build the best plan for you to implement in conserving water and preserving our water supply. You are in a great position collaborating with the community, stakeholders, staff, and the district to provide leadership in northeast Florida, and as we work together as a team, to give you the tools to serve our community and the region. So I want to thank you again for this opportunity. So I now will bring up the master of ceremonies, Ms. Deidre Irwin, and you are for a treat. She is a preeminent expert revered in the state of Florida for her expertise.
She's shaking her head behind her back. Between trying to thank you, Mayor Lake, city council members, thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. And after the wrestling team and that introduction, I'm feeling under a lot of pressure. So this is part of what we do at the district. We try to take what we have learned all around our 18 counties and share it with elected officials. One of those reasons is to avoid mistakes others have made along the way, and they are in much more challenging... are in much more challenging positions than you are. So getting ahead of the growth that's coming to you and preparing and being knowledgeable is really important. Next slide, please. So I'm the Water Conservation Coordinator. Water conservation in Florida is very challenging to message because we have some I'm going to share with you a lot of strategies that we've learned the hard way, what works, also some data on developments and the amount of water they actually use. So you are knowledgeable as you move forward. So something that we do at the district is collect data on all of the water that we allocate throughout the entire district to all of our water users. The list here is what we call our water use categories. As you can see, for year 2020, the 21 report will be out soon. It takes quite a while to gather this data. Public water supply or utility water use is our number one water use category, agriculture being number two. If we have a very dry year, ag will be much larger. But over the years since I've been at the district, I've seen that blue piece of the pie grow as we see growth within the district and more and more utilities, more residents using water, as you would expect. And next slide, please. What we know from the American Water Works Association, from our utilities reporting to us, that if the home has in-ground irrigation, an automatic irrigation system, 50% of the home's water use is outdoors. So that's the number one category of water use in a residential development is irrigation. Next slide, please. And we've partnered with the University of Florida, who've developed a tool called H2O Save. It's a geospatial database that tells a utility, they partner with utilities, who's using the water, how much they're using, and how conservation strategies can impact that water use. So they have shared their data with us. Next slide. And one piece of that data I want to share with you so you're aware. So homes built since 2015 in all of those areas highlighted on the previous map, it's over about a third of the state of Florida. So it's a lot of homeowner water use data. We're seeing 45% of the water being used indoors, 55% being used outdoors. So that's the proof of that previous slide is accurate here and likely water use you're going to see with traditional irrigation systems. Next slide, please. So I think you're probably aware that the district is legislatively mandated to do what we call water supply planning. When we have a minimum flow and level situation where a water body that you know well is impaired or is struggling, we are required by law to implement this regional water supply plan. We're just entering the renewal of the North Florida Regional Water Supply Plan with Swanee River. We're partnered with them on this planning effort. Next slide, please. And in a water supply plan, we look at the available supply or lack thereof in our traditional supplies. We look at the projected demand, both for growth of residential growth, commercial growth, agricultural growth, and we quantify how much water is going to be needed over the next 20 years. We add the best we can calculate on popular district is now becoming constrained, and we're almost every single utility has to find other sources, whether it be the lower Florida aquifer, a surface water. I just reviewed a permit document today for the city of Sanford. They're taking a lot of their irrigation water use from the river. There's many different sources. There's one cheap source. The cheapest source is the water you don't use to stretch out your supply. So avoiding water use with conservation programs. So that's where conservation fits. It's not just a feel-good thing anymore. It's an essential way to delay the expense of these much more expensive alternative supplies. Next slide. So basically, it's essential for new and existing residents, no matter the source. So it's important right now when we're using water from the aquifer and we know it's constrained. It's going to become even more important with the water sources that are two times, three times more expensive. It's really going to be in our best interest to conserve those. So we're going to focus today on construction, how we can build differently to maximize conservation on day one when the house is built. Homeowner won't even know. They are purchasing the largest product they'll ever purchase, but it's going to perform better. It's going to have a higher performance that they're not even aware of. We've learned the hard way that it's all but impossible to go back and fix this problem once you have a bad irrigation system that uses three times the water it's meant to use. So getting it at the beginning is very important. So we're going to talk about strategies today for new homes, new growth in the area. This is a very low water use area traditionally because you don't have a lot of in-ground automatic irrigation systems. And people have more traditional style landscaping and no HOAs telling you how your yard should look. Next slide, please. Which is a huge driver. You can keep clicking this one. I didn't realize that it would be. So I'm going to kind of loosely base the conversation on the Florida Water Star because that is the program that brought all of this together for us and quantified what's possible. So it is a voluntary certification program, but it's being used in many different ways around the state for code, writing code, et cetera. Next slide. So the St. John's owns the program. Next. South and Southwest are partners, but it is a statewide program. It is being homes are being built to this standard all over the state. Next slide. We signed an agreement with the Florida Home Builders Association to administer the program for us back in 2017 because they see the writing on the wall. If they want to keep building in Florida, they got to build better so that there's enough water for their homes. So they are a partner in this program. Next slide. So what third-party certification actually means is that a third party or an entity reviews the projects, determines that it meets specific criteria, and issues the certification. So it is separate from your building code, folks who come out and inspect. It's a third-party inspection. That's how this works. There's many ways of doing this, though, and using the criteria. Next slide. So there's a whole process. We work with the Certified Ratings Program through the Florida Home Builders. They do Energy Star, Water Star, and all sorts of different programs, and then they issue this certificate. So it's a very defined process with a board that oversees it. Next slide. We also developed training. We learned very early on that we had the experts in irrigation told us how we should design irrigation systems. We very quickly learned that the professionals out there had no idea how to install systems to meet our criteria. So we partnered up with the Florida Nursery Gores Association to develop a full day of training for landscape and irrigation professionals and an accreditation. We've trained over 1,000 people. We have 500 who renew their AP certification because it's important to understand in Florida, there's no licensing requirement to be an irrigation professional. So the professional who installs the number one water-using system in the home doesn't require any licensing, and there are no standards. It's wide open. Now, many other counties and cities have implemented their own standards. We have some model ordinances. We help local governments develop standards. But the irrigation industry, basically, their qualifications are from the previous person who taught them how to install a system. So to be a professional, you need a truck, glue, and pipe. And you don't but there is a voluntary license. We are partnered with Florida Irrigation Society to try and get that licensing mandated. So these people who install a system that's our number one water use in the home are qualified to do so. Okay, next slide. I'll get off my soapbox on that issue. You can keep you can click it two more times. So the pro oh, actually, once. The program looks at irrigation, landscape, and indoor. You must do all three to be a water star, but I'm mainly going to talk about irrigation. Next slide. Real quick, indoors, we're looking at the indoor plumbing fixtures, toilets, faucets, showers, and the appliances. The really great thing is to build water star indoors does not cost a single penny to the builder. All of these products are the same cost. A water-sense toilet costs the same as a traditional building code toilet, but uses 20% less water. Same with the showers, faucets. Now Energy Star is water efficient since 2011. So if a builder installs an Energy Star product, he's saving 20%. So indoor water star is easy, slam dunk, doesn't cost any more money. The cost is on the outdoors with the irrigation. Next slide. Landscaping, very straightforward. We use the Florida Friendly Program from the University of Florida, Right Plant, Right Place. We follow all of their guidelines. We're not experts in landscaping, so we're heavily partnered with them on it also. Next slide. Irrigation is where it gets a little tricky for the reasons I mentioned earlier, the lack of standards in the state and the lack of licensing requirements. So we have a number, about 15, I believe, criteria to ensure the irrigation system is efficient. Next slide. So we reduce make sure we reduce leaks. We put make sure the water is put out evenly in the turf zone, pressure is correct, and for commercial, we have a water budget requirement. And I inspected our new building, our new office in Apopka last week, and we had a leak. So even though we thought we were doing the right thing, and because it's very sandy soil, never would have known had it not been for the inspection. Next slide. Okay, you can keep going till we move on. So a few years ago, we partnered with the University of Florida and actually quantified the savings. In Kissimmee, the utility there is called Toho Water Authority, and they allowed us to use their data. We compared non-water star homes with water star homes, and we saw approximately 43% less water being used in a water star home. After the homeowners move in, they don't know they're living in a special home. It's just designed differently. It's gotten less turf grass, bigger beds, and it's using the high-volume irrigation. There's less of it, and it's designed to be more efficient. So that on it on average worked out at about 43 gallons, 43,000 gallons per year saving for the life of the home, assuming they keep up the irrigation system. And that is with watering within our irrigation restrictions, the two days a week and one day a week restrictions. Next slide. Third-party certification isn't for everyone, but so a lot of local governments have added incentives to encourage builders to build differently so they can have efficiency. So Palm Coast has an impact fee rebate, and Polk County now actually mandates water star, and they have a rebate. Tampa Bay is offering $1,000 to builders to build to the water star standard, and OUC has $300 rebate. So it's being used in a number of different ways just to get this higher standard. Next slide, and I'm nearly finished. Then there's also requirements. So Toho Water in Kissimmee requires water star. On top of the world, in Ocala, this very large development has mandated the program. Mulberry, Davenport, some small cities in Polk County that do not have enough water have mandated this also for their builders. And Alachua County has some requirements for outdoor that are water star also. Next slide. We've got a number of people who just lifted the criteria and put it in code. So they don't require the third-party inspection. They don't but they require the home and the local of the local building officials inspect or the local code, whoever does the inspection are the ones who inspect. Or they added incentive or a rebate, and they have the criteria built into code. So that's another alternative. You can see the list is getting longer and longer of local governments who've done this. Next slide. We've recently joined what's called the Green Building Registry. It's a national database of green-built homes. So if someone is looking at moving into Florida, they can click an area, and they can pull down the certifications, and they'll see all the water star homes. And they can it's also tied to the Green MLS. I know you're all familiar with the multiple listing service. There's Green MLS that many counties have, and water star gives you extra value for your home when you sell. So it raises the value of the home, the certification. Next slide. So really, what I want to drive home is that if you're going to Europe, the off or the onset of growth coming to Keystone, I really urge you to look around, see what others have done to control the amount of water being used by the new subdivisions that may be coming here, especially seeing as where you're located, like Doug said, you know, to lead by example would be really important. Consider pulling together a stakeholder group because getting the buy-in from the builders and the irrigate the irrigation industry is 100% behind us. They will come and speak. They will the leaders of the industry in Florida. Commit to whatever you create to that you can enforce it. We have several codes around the state that are not being enforced. They're not worth the paper they're written on if there are not the staff or someone to implement that code. Offer training. We will help with training for your irrigation official irrigation installers, for your staff. We've helped many cities with their training so they know what they're looking at, what an efficient system looks like. Collaborate with others. The extension service, in some areas of Tampa Bay, the extension agents do the inspections. So UF is very, very interested in helping in any way they can with programs like this. And then maybe consider pilot programs. Before you change or implement anything, maybe consider a pilot program, some kind of incentive. And then make sure, once you've installed or implemented a code, if you go in that direction, quantify, come back a few years later and see, is it working? Are we getting the savings we had hoped for? And do the same with the program. And I think that might be my last slide. And it is, there you go. So any questions about water conservation or?
A lot of information, a lot of great information. Thank you for that. You have questions?
What percentage of new homes don't have in-ground irrigation? Zero?
Zero.
Well, I don't. We just built a couple of years ago.
And that's exactly it. We have some areas, single-family homes.
Right.
And you can choose not to have irrigation. If it's a subdivision that is being developed all at once, very few landscape installers will warranty the landscape without an irrigation system. So it comes down to that component. But I checked recently with the building official in Clay County, and they said every new subdivision has in-ground irrigation. Doesn't have to. St. John's County only allows 50% to be irrigated.
We built in an old subdivision, so that's probably why you're not picking it up.
Infill is good. We like homes like that.
Any other questions?
And I'm happy to come back and meet with you with you again if you need more information.
Ms. Kowski has your information and contact. So moving forward, you're live on her.
And just one important point that this what we call the passive in the new homes creates the water savings. And so what you have done by saving them thousands of gallons of water a year, the important part is because affordability is a big topic nowadays. Well, affordability is not just necessarily buying a house. You also look at your utilities, your insurance. There's a lot of things in the homeownership that drive affordability. So here is a savings of several hundred dollars a year for the life cycle during that house. And I would make a guess that water is not going to get any cheaper because of the cost of things to treat the water, the sources that the water comes from. We have charts that can show you where, you know, to pull the and pull the treat the water out of the Florida versus alternative water supplies versus reclaim versus I mean, there's it's pretty amazing that that difference. And so you're providing a long-term savings to them once they're in the house, and they don't even realize it. They just are moving in, and they're being able to and there are thousands of homes coming, and I say thousands, it's five digits coming into Clay County, Keystone Heights. And then when you multiply that northeast Florida and the state, you can see that's a lot of water that's being drawn. So it's essential for us to drive conservation so that we are putting less dry volume need to pull it out of the ground, which is obviously easy.
Are there any communities that are using saltwater and desalination?
Tampa Bay Water has a very large desal plant. It's 17 times more expensive to treat that water than water from the aquifer.
At least you can take a shot.
It would be the will of the council to look at policy as we move forward and look at the possibility of annexing in and growth of is this was a part of something that we wanted to look at adopting. Am I correct in that?
That is correct. Obviously, there's a process to this as much as. Obviously, there's a process to this as much as I would like it to happen overnight. I understand the, the process that you and any other board, the decision-making board has a process to go through, have discussions, work with your constituents, your stakeholders, come up with what works best for you in Keystone. And that, and that's really the crux of our conversation. We're in, we're in discussions with Clay County and with other municipalities and counties because we're beginning this new phase in Northeast Florida, right? Believe in being proactive because we have Central Florida, South Florida, like you're hearing, places their backs are already against the wall. So I would prefer not to have to have the conversation because our back's there, that we want to be there so we never allow our backs against the wall.
But whatever we do, if we do something, we can't be looking at retrofit, we'd be looking at prospective new developments and that sort of thing?
For the most part. But there are things, we do have strategies, you mentioned. You know, I live in an old neighborhood, don't have reclaimed water. So the water conservation things I had to do were to replace the heads, the audits. The utility is very good at quantifying water use, doing inspections and helping you out. So there are things the homeowner can do, but after the fact is a much more inefficient way of getting the more effective. You know, making sure you have the stop ring, which, those sensors, which by the way are required by law. It's just, you know, again, it's, it's maintenance. The water, the water controllers, the smart controllers, training them to understand what in the, is in the garage, how to use it properly. The technology's improving in those as quickly as it is in your phone so that you can control it by your phone. DEDU just put one in based, using a JEA rebate. So it does much training for the homeowner to understand as it is when you buy a new car, you go through training, how do I use my car efficiently? Same thing. So it's, it's a multi-pronged process, but one at the end of the day makes a very important aspect on a quantity that is a limited resource to us. And we're here to help you in any way, anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure, did any, I know the records were here for that presentation. I didn't know if anybody wanted to check out. Did any of y'all want to leave or you just riveted by this room? Riveted. And you're here to the good rim. Okay. There you go. See?
I'll give you a red one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you, Joe.
Not you, Mr. Hart, you may not leave. We'll continue. Ms. Rukowski, are there any public comment cards?
Apparently not.
Apparently the public has left.
No, there are no public comments. I do have a couple of agenda changes if you want to recognize those now.
So we do have a couple of changes. You had at your dais seat, new application for another event that's going to be added to 3C. And due to technical difficulties, 7C, I'm looking for a motion to table that.
Also move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. So we will see that on another agenda. And then we will move to events 3A, McNeely Birthday Party, a pavilion rental with alcohol. Has, has everyone had a chance to review the application?
Madam Mayor, if I may, the applicant was unable to come last minute. However, we do have a 50th birthday party there, expecting 50 to 60 people on October 8th. The date has changed. I don't know if that's available on your package or not. And they're asking for consumption of alcohol. They do understand that it's confined to the pavilion only. And as our ordinance states, this comes before council for approval.
Is there a motion to approve this? Are there any questions of staff first? Let me go back.
Yes.
Individuals, that's typically not covered, or that's not part of it.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing no questions, is there a motion to approve?
Also move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. Event B is the Keystone Heights Kiwanis Community Band Concert.
Oh, boy.
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Go ahead, Mr. Hart.
This will be, I think, the eighth year of the Keystone Community Band sponsored by the Kiwanis Club. And we had a very successful year last year. We actually do this in two seasons. We're looking basically at our Christmas concert, which will be in December for our fall season this year. It's been, it's been a lot of fun, it's been very successful. I think it's been good for the Kiwanis Club, and frankly, I think it's been good for the community and the players.
Absolutely.
Are these the same ones that played a couple of months ago in the pavilion?
Yeah, same group.
I make a motion, we accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item C is the Rotary Event. It is a Rotary Club of Keystone Heights. I believe it's a social. Mr. Cornigay is here. Are there any questions, Mr. Cornigay, about this event? It is a social with alcohol consumption. No?
Please put on the color card like you see.
Okay. Sure. The club's social is September 1st, 2022. I do not see hours of the event. Would you like to explain, Mr. Cornigay?
I turned it off. Scott Cornigay, Rotary Club of Keystone Heights. I'm going to look up the email that our president, or the text that our president sent me today regarding the time, if you'll bear with me.
And I think staff would want to know that information too. Is that correct, Ms. Rukowski?
Yes, ma'am.
If my memory serves, it's going to be 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Let me just.
Okay.
Yep, that's it. 6:00 PM, 7:30 PM.
All right, Mr. Brown proposed the first. Is there a second for this event?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
We're moving to the consent agenda, which includes the June financials, the June payables, and the minutes for the July meeting. Is there a motion to move all three items?
Also move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We have moved on to Boo on the Old Business, and the first item under Old Business is Boo on the Boulevard. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Rukowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last month, council did approve the road closure for State Road 21 on the Saturday prior, which I believe is the 28th? 29th?
29th.
It's right in front of me, I'm sorry. Of the 29th of October. The city would like to partner with Hartwell Handyman, which is who did the Back to School Bash this past weekend. They're fantastic addition to our community. They have wonderful ideas and community engagement for the businesses on how to make this a fantastic event. So this is just information. As you know, the Lions Club slash KLRBA have decided to put their efforts elsewhere, and so this is something that the city has taken on. And just as any other event, the only budget item from this is going to be safety and security from our CRA, and then the rest, there will not be, there will not be taxpayer dollars to be spent on this.
All right, we've heard a description of Boo on the Boulevard, the request by city manager to approve the event. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
You have a question? Ask your question.
I'm sorry. We, you got food trucks down here. Are we still, we had a conversation the other day about food trucks or have a civic organization do like the Boy Scouts used to do?
Yes, so there'll be conversations with Ms. Christina Minks and all of our nonprofits of community involvement, if Kiwanis, Rotary, our other agencies or our other nonprofits want to get involved. If you remember, several years ago, the Boy Scouts would sell hot dogs and hamburgers as a fundraiser. We'd like to offer that up to our community clubs first as an opportunity to bring them into our event, to make it truly a community event, and then any kind of funds that they receive from it, and then we can offer it up to our food trucks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no question, is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. We are on Old Business, item B, Keystone Corner Market. Ms. Rukowski, would you like to explain?
Yes, this was one of the conversations that council had several months ago about bringing back events to the city of Keystone Heights, and one of them was a farmer's market of sorts. And so now that we've got some things calmed down, and Ms. Christina Minks is doing a fantastic job with our events, we'd like to go ahead and add the farmer's market back starting this coming September. It'll be the second Saturday, and it'll be a once-a-month event. She has communicated with the rest of Clay County, making sure that our event days coordinate with everyone else's that are in the area.
Have you checked the football schedule?
Well, it's Florida and fall, and that's always going to be a thing. However, we do encourage as, as they're making their way to Gainesville to cheer on their gators, that they stop by the corner market first.
And they have done that in the past.
They, they absolutely have. So years ago, when I managed the market, we would come, they would come, all decorated out from head to toe in their gator, their gator gear to pick up some last-minute things for whatever they were doing tailgating there.
So do we have hours yet? Or you said 10:00 AM to 1:00?
So the hours will be early in the morning. We're probably looking at 9:00 to noon-ish, but we want to keep it simple and in the morning. It, it does still get relatively hot.
Yes, in September.
That becomes an issue.
Okay.
So is Christina going to be driving the bus on this one on a day-to-day basis, or how's that going to be managed?
Yes, so we did work out a schedule with her to where she will be here present for these days of the market, and then we'll adjust accordingly throughout the week. She's the point of contact, and I will add on just as anything else that we do with our Christmas extravaganza, and then some of the other events that we do charge a vendor fee. All of that goes into a separate fund that we've discussed that it, that when no taxpayer dollars are being spent on events, we're putting that back into events. And so for movies and whatnot, all of that's taken through vendor fees. And then the original conversation was if OCD was not going to continue, how do we continue that ourselves? And this is a way to claim some of those funds.
Will this be in the Rotary area or across the street?
It'll be behind City Hall where the restrooms are.
Also, how many months out of the year are you proposing to run it?
So we'll stop probably in June. May will be our last month, and then stop for the summertime as it gets just way too hot.
Okay. So you're, you're saying September to?
Through May. And then that may be adjusted depending on vendor participation if it gets too hot.
Seeing Nicole here, I have a question for, for me and her. Will you have music?
I'm sorry?
Will there be music? Are you planning on some music?
As things progress, absolutely. And so that's.
I don't see there will be.
Yes.
You might want to wave that.
Can you buzz? So the, the, so the music, you don't have to pay to come perform?
I'm sorry?
Can, can the musicians come and perform without paying a vendor fee?
Oh, yeah, open up their cases, play guitar.
So the musicians would be something different. That's typically, we don't charge them to come perform. We're asking them to do a service as opposed to the vendors who will be making money from it.
Question?
Yes.
Will there be any product restrictions, any?
Yes, so product restrictions, and then we have all this sorted out on our application is that it has to be homemade, homegrown. So the Avon, per se, representatives can't set up. And then as time tells, we'll probably have a once-a-year, I don't want to say rummage sale, garage sale, but estate sale or things of knickknacks, but nothing commercially creative.
I, you'd be surprised what people bring and try to sell.
Absolutely.
I'm just, if there were any rules in place or anything, or do we, you know, kick them out and make them go for a swim or something?
Nothing illegal.
Nothing illegal. That, that's.
Well, that's a good thing.
More age-restricted requirements for purchase, things of that nature. And all of that will be taken care of, but we're looking for homemade, homegrown.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the proposed Keystone Corner Market?
Also.
Budget and finance, we have, you received at our special council meeting the dates for our budget cycle for August, September. And so I would trust that you've already put those in your calendar. Otherwise, Ms. Rukowski, nothing else to report, correct?
That's correct. There's Ms. Sarah, who I believe everybody has met. She's making her way through not only budgeting for this year, but then a budget amendments for this current year. So we'll be seeing those in the near future.
Okay. The Keystone Heights Airport Authority.
Good evening, council. Chairman Kirkland or Ms. Hitt or Ms. Cersei could be here tonight, so I was asked to present the report for the Keystone Heights Airport authority, Scott Cornigay. And I am the chairman of Intergovernmental Relations and Business Development at the airport. So the month of July was not as fulfilled as usual, but we certainly have been working hard at keeping up and mowing and maintaining airport projects. As you know, we've got a bit of rain over the last two weeks. That only makes things tougher for the folks out there that are trying to keep up with the grass. Mr. Kirkland reported to you last month about our high prices on aviation fuel and impact that it's making on our travel. Although that remains, we're starting to notice prices are slowly dropping. They are still at or in the highs that we've seen. Our Timboree project kicked off the week of July the 11th and will continue through mid-August. As mentioned before, this tree-thinning project will assist in staying compliant with FDOT as relates to airfield safety. The airport received our fully executed FAA FDOT grant for our taxi lane rehabilitation project in the amount of $2.3 million, which will begin late December, early January. Ms. Cersei hosted a kickoff meeting on July the 20th with a group of volunteers to discuss the planning of our 80th anniversary community celebration. We have confirmed that the event is scheduled for December 3rd at 10:00 AM, 4:00 PM. As usual, we have a great group of people within the community coming together with great ideas to make this a super family event and a display. If any of you are involved or interested in volunteering, please contact Ms. Cersei, and she will certainly find a job for you today. The next meeting is scheduled for August the 11th at 4:00 PM at the airport. Ms. Cersei is currently attending the Florida Airport Council's annual conference in Orlando. This conference showcases Florida's great airports, recognizes international, regional, as well as general aviation improvement projects, and the millions of dollars programmed each year to help keep our aviation community operational and safe. She'll take this opportunity to attend sessions that provide useful tools and tips on getting through the minefield of economic struggles in today's aviation world. CCUA water feasibility report was submitted in late July, and we are now waiting to hear back from CCUA after their review. With the help of city manager Lynn Rukowski and many other stakeholders, we continue to search for project editors, wander media, any obvious answers.
Any questions for Mr. Cornigay?
This is way off topic, but did, and maybe you can't speak to this. The accident that occurred a couple of days ago off Baker Road, is that?
Yes, sir, I don't, I don't really know.
And what's in the newspaper? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your report.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Rukowski, anything from planning and zoning?
The city, along with the RMP, we'll talk, is reviewing pot pies, so they have surfaced again with Keystone Heights. We're going through a staff review on that, and then we suspect that within the next month or two, we should be probably seeing application to hear them again in front of planning and zoning.
Heritage Commission, Ms. Brenrod, how are you?
I'm good. How's everybody?
Good.
Great. Well, so thank you last, for the last meeting, for approving my budget for the next event that we're having.
next event that we're having in September, which is going to be the Historic Homeowners' Workshop. And within my submission, I gave you all the agenda for what the meeting will entail, but we're going to have, is she, Gary, from the Clay County, she's archivist there, to come and present?
And share with the homeowners the beginning of Keystone Heights, as John Lawrence started out things back in 1921. She does an amazing job, I think, outlining how it all started. And I really think the homeowners are going to appreciate some of that knowledge. My part will be to share with them what the role of the Heritage Commission is for the community, and our roles in to promote education, and also the continued efforts to have the placking process, and certainly outline what the placking process is. There's a lot of misconception. So I'm hoping that we are going, I have 35 homeowners that have homes 75 years and older, who are going to be invited as a VIP guest, which will be an RSVP attendance, because we're going to serve brunch over here at the pavilion. So, looking forward to it. I hope we have a great turnout. I'll have those invites sent out before the end of the month, and stay on top of it, and we'll certainly probably have some other special guests as well. Do you all have any questions?
Fantastic. Sounds like a great, you know, great start.
Hope so. Thanks.
Thank you. New Business, Item A, sidewalks.
Yes, Madam Mayor. In your packet are the addresses and dimensions of sidewalk replacement for this current fiscal year. Every year, the council allocates $7,500. Our public works is in the process of getting these quoted out, to see how much we can get done within that $7,500, and if there's any adjustments to be made. I know that this is something that council does like to review ahead of time, so this is what we're working on now. We tend to wait until the end, in case something happens, where there is an emergency or immediate action that needs to be taken on the sidewalks. We can deal with that out of that $7,500, but we have not had that at this time, so...
Thank you.
We're looking at spending all of it on sidewalks this year. No, we don't need a vote. This is just for...
Approved budget, yeah. Okay, so then we can move on. Was there any questions? Does anybody have a windshield question or something?
Jasmine, is that mostly on this end of Jasmine?
Is it near the school?
The school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that needs to be reviewed first.
And those are his priorities, as he walks through, to make sure that around the school is taken care of, and then he works his way out.
Perfect. Item B is ecotourism master plan. Ms. Rukowski?
Yes, so this is our fun item on the agenda. As you know, the city was directed and approved to go and reply for a grant through the DEO. We have not heard of the outcome of that grant yet. The grant was an ask for $40,000. As stated by DRMP and Manly Design, the scope of this was, the scope of this parks master plan was really focused around City Hall. It was this area-centric, and then we could build out as accord for funds. This is what was produced for the master plan, for the beginning phases of that. I believe it's just shy of $20,000. But to that, I would like to introduce our new engineer from DRMP, who's patiently sitting next to me.
He didn't have any choice.
Mr. Paul Yergane, he is taking the place of Mr. Chad Rashard, who has moved on to a different avenue of his life. And so we are very, very pleased to work with Mr. Paul. He's been fantastic, and picking right up and moving forward. So if there's any questions, I'm sure that he'll be able to answer them, or any general questions at all.
So explain a little bit further the nature of this grant, and what, and how we will use it?
So the nature of this grant is solely through DEO, and that was something that the city went out for separately, and it was an ecotourism master plan. The idea of the grant is so that the city of Keystone Heights can create a master plan moving forward, on how we can improve our ecotourism and promote economic development. So the grant itself was for $40,000. The idea of that is that if we are awarded, then we can create a much larger ecotourism master plan involving all of our parks, and really have the outline of when those other grants, additional funding is available, we have projects ready on the shelf.
So do we have some projects that, I mean, have we been thinking about, have we suggested in the grant which projects we would like?
Well, that's part of the ecotourism or the parks master plan. It's what we discussed. We've had conversations about a splash pad. We've had conversations about finishing the rails to trails. We've had conversations about the tennis courts. And so the beginning of this, the $20,000 from DRMP, the proposal with Manly Design, is really capturing what our immediate priorities are, so that we can focus our efforts towards those grants.
Okay. So essentially, this evening, what you're asking from us is you'd like for us to approve?
So this is the initial, the $20,000 is around the first part of this ecotourism plan, if you will. I'm looking for a motion from the council to approve this portion of it, so that I can place it into next year's budget.
Okay. So, questions? Any questions of staff, or the engineer? Thank you for being here, by the way.
Anything that he would like to add or introduce himself, I'd hate for him to sit through and not have any kind of...
I'd like to hear from Dave a little bit, see what he has to say. Kid gets to know you a little bit.
Well, thank you very much. Again, my name's Paul Yergane. I'm with the RMP, and been in, I've been a civil engineer for over 30 years, so honored to be here. This is a pretty typical type project that we would help a city with, where you're taking a look into the future at opportunities. So it's a planning phase. We work very closely with Manly Design. We work on many projects together, and they're fantastic at what they do. So we'd work collaboratively to take a look at a plan, work with the city, and then come up with something that we can recommend to you.
Okay. Questions?
Is there a timeframe for, I'm looking at the master plan and conduct a project kickoff meeting. Is there any timeframe for having that, or are we waiting for the money?
So we'll be working closely with Manly Design and DRMP to schedule that, but it'll happen after October 1, once it's adopted budget.
Next fiscal.
Okay. So seeing no questions for staff about the master plan, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 5-0. All right. Council comments. I'll start with Vice Mayor Hart.
Well, I think most of us attended the meeting with the sheriff the other morning. Very, very interesting. Tony, I know you were out of town on business, but she gave us a very good insight as to what she's going to be doing with the city, and I was very encouraged that the sheriff's office most probably will have a substation here, and I think that's good. Second thing has to do with a comment that Nicole Wagner made about busking. Busking is setting up a musician, usually by himself, on a straight corner, opening up a case, working for tips. I don't think we have an ordinance against it. I would encourage that we don't have an ordinance against it, only because, and this is selfish, during the centennial, I think we're going to be putting together a New Orleans band to just kind of walk around, do this sort of stuff. That's all I have.
Okay.
Sidebar, we're here. Do we have an ordinance? I don't think so.
No, the question, it's not that we have an ordinance to that, but I mean, it just, it sounds like you're calling panhandling something different.
Well, just a little higher form of panhandling. We can have that conversation, but it's...
I'm happy to talk about it offline.
They have it in several cities. It's pretty common practice. A lot of cities won't regulate it. St. Augustine, I know, does. But that, I guess, would be a policy discussion and can have a later date, or something on the agenda.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
I was just going to second what Steve said about the sheriff being here and opening up a substation here. I think the citizens in Keystone really appreciate that.
I think they'll appreciate that, too. Mr. Brown?
I'd like to third that, I guess. It, they did a very good presentation. Cameras are great. They're arresting people. And I just also wanted to talk about Johnny's barbecue. That guy has hired, I don't know if you could count the number of students over the years, and just one of the most supportive businesses for Keystone around, and good barbecue. And that's, that's all I've got.
Mr. Brown?
Whoa, sorry about that. I found out Friday morning, I do not miss driving to Jacksonville early mornings, but unfortunately, I wasn't here for the sheriff. But I did take the opportunity Saturday about 1:00, 1:30, something like that. She was here for the Back to School Bash, which I walked around, talked to some people, and that, I agree with what the city manager said earlier. I got to meet the person that put the van on, and very excited for what they did for all these kids. I didn't stay but maybe 30, 45 minutes, and the sheriff was here. And to see our sheriff get so involved in our communities, I mean, Saturday was a busy day for her, because there was a lot going on in Clay County Saturday. And she had a couple of her children here with her, and it's just nice to know our head law enforcement officer knows about us, and she doesn't have to have a bodyguard around her, like previous ones have. So, but that was a good event. It was good to see how many people showed up, and all the food trucks, and Michael Heater's fire truck, and the big American flag flying over our parking lot.
Yep. I stepped in probably after you left, Tony, and for the same reason, kind of walked around. It's wonderful to see the park with the blowups. It looks so festive. It looks, you know, the kids are running around. Parents can chill at the picnic tables. So it was really wonderful for them to provide that activity for our families. Enjoyed, very much enjoyed walking around and visiting with people. I didn't kind of make a list this month. I maybe have procrastinated a little bit writing about Sweet Tea, so I was busy this afternoon trying to put all that together. But I want to echo what Mr. Brown has said. If we didn't say enough for Johnny Mason, you know, I apologize. I really feel like, over the years, he has been the one go-to business, the one go-to guy for any need that anybody in this, in this community has ever had. And so I appreciate that he continues to enjoy this community and get out, get from us what he needs, because he's a businessperson. And so with that, I will go to Ms. Rukowski.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of things to report. The feasibility study at the Keystone Airport is being reviewed right now by CCUA. We had a brief conversation with Mr. Jeremy Johnson regarding that. We're looking forward to his feedback, and that way we can go ahead and move forward from the Clay County side on what we need to do to get water sewer out to the airport. I did join Chairman Kirkland and the airport manager, Ms. Cersey, at the Bradford County Commission Workshop last, two weeks ago. So let me tell you, they were a little bit surprised to see Keystone Heights there discussing things to do with their ARPA funding. It was a great conversation about some partnerships with Keystone Airport, and so I look forward to sitting at the table with their county manager and city manager, and what we can do to make our airport even better than what it is for both counties. There's no news to report on the accident yet. I know that the airport was involved with, in the initial beginning of that, to make sure that they did not leave from the Keystone Air Park. I've had conversations over today, actually, with the CCSO, with the Clay County Sheriff's Office, about their stop station that's going to be put here, that she announced on Friday. That was a very quick conversation. It was one I was approached about 10 minutes prior to that going live, had conversations of making sure that that was good, and then we will now have a stop station. So what that means is that they, the sheriff's office, will have a place to come, that they'll be able to utilize the restroom in a secured location. They will be meeting individuals here in our conference room that need to have conversations or discussions with them. We will also provide additional resources here in City Hall, so that's been, will be an ongoing conversation over the next month with the sheriff's office, on what that looks like for here at City Hall. You'll see a couple of changes to parking back behind City Hall, and then some information on our windows, as well as Facebook and other social media. Echoing with Johnny's barbecue, I did want to just add information to that, that Mr. Johnny Mason has been fantastic, and any kind of hurricane or storm that we've had here, he's always been first in line to make sure that our crew is fed and charged, so that they can go out and take care of whatever's going on outside. So he really is a fantastic asset in our community, and just a gem. The End of Summer Bash, I was there that morning to help give them some resources and just gather some information. They had about 400 people that attended, which is fantastic for an event in Keystone Heights, especially a lot of them came up and had no idea that it was going on, so really word of mouth catches on. Also had conversations with Mr. Mike Heater of the Fantastic, Fun-Tastic Fire Brigade. He's very interested in being more involved into our community, and will be seeing that big flag in a lot of our events moving forward.
Oh, good. That's great.
With that being said, that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Any questions for...
Sheriff's Night Out, that's tomorrow night.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So we do have two events that are happening tomorrow night. We do have Sheriff's Night Out, and then we do have, Clay County School District is going to have an open house in our pavilion in conjunction with that, to have conversations, and hopefully tame some of the rumors, or negative feedback that we've received via Facebook on some things that's going on with the playground, and they can answer one-on-one any questions that's going on. So it'll be a great night.
I think some specific people have been personally invited to attend that meeting to build some confidence in the plan.
We're trying really hard, so...
Okay. No more questions for Ms. Rukowski? Mr. Commando? Nothing tonight? I don't know. I think he relishes in the fact when he says, "Nothing tonight."
Now, what do you have against eighteen organizations?
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none.